Good evening, everybody. If we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We will start with the reporter, the chairman. I actually have one thing that I wanted to read, which is an update for the paid administrative leave. It has come to my attention that rumors have started regarding the investigation being conducted by David Ryan of Ryan &amp; Ryan LLC. In order to ensure a fair process for Dr. Zamory, first, I would like to state that I have no knowledge of any criminal issues related to Mr. Ryan's investigation. Excuse me. Second, it is my belief that the focus of the investigation is related to budgetary, oversight, and leadership issues. This is the only comment I have at this time. Thank you. We will move on to acknowledgement of donations. ExxonMobil of Monroe donated $500 to Masick to be used for extracurricular programs related to fine arts or STEM. The donation will be used in the theater to help with the setup of a new lighting lightboard and accompanied software. A grant from ExxonMobil Education Alliance for $500 was presented to Masick to be used in the areas of math and/or science. The donation will be used to support new laboratory kits in our AP Biology course. So we'd like to thank them very much for those two generous donations to our programs. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Nick. Do I have a second?
Thank you, David. Joe, did you just want to say anything about the new hire of the school psychologist at Monroe?
Yeah, I know. Well, we're all happy, especially, I know, Kelly Svensson. It's been, that's been an unfilled need for quite some time. We've been kind of band-aiding it together. We've had, you know, someone coming in on a part-time basis trying to do some of this work. So it was really nice that we got Kendall in. Kendall got her bachelor's at the University of Connecticut and her, both her masters and sixth year at the University of Hartford. Seems to be, seems to be a good fit. When she get started?
When does she start?
February 1st.
February 3rd.
February 3rd.
Oh, and I probably should have went back and acknowledged Ron, but I just saw Ron Bonaski sitting there. So Ron Bonaski is joining us in finance and splitting his time as a shared service between us and the town of Monroe for the foreseeable future. So welcome, Ron. We are still in the process of working out a memorandum of understanding between us and the town of Monroe, so that will be coming forth before the Board of Education for review. It just has not been, the details have not been worked out as of yet. And it'll go before also the town council. So I were, should have that by our next meeting for everybody's review as to the agreement.
We're really excited to have Ron. I mean, he offers instant stability to our, to the organization. He knows Muniz, knows, you know, very familiar with our finance staff and, you know, I've been always impressed with him and really impressed with his knowledge even before this about our budget. So it's definitely going to be very helpful in the short term. And hopefully, we can find a shared service with the town, something we've looked into for a long time.
Thank you. All right. Well, welcome, Ron. I hope today wasn't too overwhelming. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Up first is Masick board reps.
I hope everyone is doing well and has a great week. To start off, it's a big week at Masick. Midterms start tomorrow. There will be a bunch of anti-stress activities called Stress Busters that are going to be taking place at Masick. So each day, there's going to be an open gym, a dance party at the auditorium, arts and crafts in the CAF, which includes slime making, which is tomorrow, and then coloring. And there will also be comfort dogs in the building. Also, unified sports basketball started last Tuesday, and today was our second practice. And the seven-and-two Masick boys team have a game against Immaculate tonight, so good luck to them.
All right. And the Robotics WPI event went very well for Masick Robotics. They had a great weekend, and we had two teams in the top 20, 4478V in seventh and 4478Z in 20th. And four of our five teams competed in eliminations, and 4478V made it to the quarterfinals. And as Briggs was saying, midterms start this week, which I'm very excited about. And midterms will go till Monday, and Masick will have half, will have half-days during the exam times, and each exam is two hours each. And yeah, we're really excited for that.
Briggs, are you really excited for that?
Oh, yeah.
Great, thank you. You guys can leave because we're going to be in budgets now soon.
Thank you.
Go study for your midterms. Thank you. Does anybody have any other report, committee reports? Dave, thank you, Dave.
On Thursday, the 16th, the Safety Committee had a meeting here at Masick in the afternoon. All of the schools reported on the drills that they're doing. There's a lot of significant and really good work being done by, by all the, all the schools' safety committees, so thank you for all of that. And we also updated our safety plan based on the after-action reviews of the Masick incident. We're always learning. It's a living document, so some equipment came in, some updated plans. So thank you, everybody, for your work on that and the cooperation with the Monroe Police. It all just came together, so all that's, has been updated, and we're working on some other stuff. So a lot of good work and good results.
We looked at moving the times of the Safety Committee around a little bit, too, to hit all the schools and not pull everybody out of, out of the schools during the school day.
Does anybody else have committee reports? Well, we're in committee reports. We never finalized at our January 6 meeting the committee assignments for the next two years, so if we can actually go back and go over that. So Board of Finance Liaison, that's a vacancy unless somebody would like to attend those meetings on a monthly basis.
And I, I thought we had an understanding that the superintendent, not to put anything else on you right now, Joe, but the superintendent and/or our Director of Finance would be doing that, so I think we'll adjust that as we need to right now.
Yeah.
Joe doesn't need another meeting to go to, but Ron is already there, so.
Thank you, Ron. Our CES, also is a Cooperative Education Services, CES liaison. That's a vacancy. The only issue with that one, which I have, you know, expressed to Chip on numerous occasions who's the head of CES, is those meetings occur on a Thursday, once a month on a Thursday at 3:00, which is near impossible for anybody to attend them, and they absolutely will not budge on their day and time of that meeting. So that, to me, unfortunately, we cannot fill because of that. Jeff is not here, but he's actually on Curriculum Council. I'm going to go with, let's keep Jeff on Curriculum Council unless somebody else would like to join him. All right. Finance Committee is myself and Alan and Christine. Is everybody good with staying on that? Okay.
Or joining for the first time.
Or joining for the first time, yeah.
And I will join Finance.
Okay, great, thank you. So Nick will join Finance. Policy Committee is George, Shannon, and Jerry. Everybody good with that?
I like that.
Okay, perfect. Pension is David, and last time around, Nick did volunteer to take Jessica's spot there, so we're good there?
Yeah, Thursday night.
And then Safety and Security, that's, we'll leave you, David, on that.
Sure.
Everybody's good with that? All righty. All right, we have committee assignments. Perfect. We will move on to public participation. No public participation. We will move on to the report of the superintendent, which I know Joe wants to keep very short.
I do, but I do want to, I think Laura Mars out there. I don't know if Lee Antis or Anne O'Doy are on there, but I just wanted to keep the board apprised of some programs that we're doing. And if I box this up, Laura, jump in, and if you guys have follow-up questions, Laura has been very involved with Sandy Hook Promise. Sandy Hook Promise is a 501(c)(3) company that was obviously created in the wake of the tragedy at Sandy Hook seven years ago. They've created a number of programs to address a lot of things, school climate, social-emotional learning, bullying, and suicide prevention amongst a few. The state of Connecticut has teamed up with the Federal Department of Justice and is offering a stop grant for all districts throughout Connecticut. Stop stands for students, teachers, and officers preventing violence, preventing schools' violence. So in essence, what's happening is this, this state grant is paying for Sandy Hook Promise to implement programs in schools across Connecticut. Actually, it's across the, across the country. I think they're, when it first started, they were in six states already. I think they're in probably about 15 states already. Three programs in specific that, that we're going to be participating in, I think it's the only three programs they have that I know of. The first one is called, and it's, we're mostly looking at implementing these in the middle school and in the high school. The first one is called Start With Hello. That's a, it's an inclusionary program to address school climate and culture, you know, having kids, you know, be nice to each other and include, and include them. The second one is called Say Something, and the Say Something Anonymous Response System, which teaches kids and encourages kids to speak to a trusted adult if they see something going on that, that shouldn't be going on. That one also comes with an anonymous response system that comes free of charge that allows kids to report via an app or a phone call to a crisis center if, if something's going on. That crisis center would then notify if it's a school issue that's not life, you know, life-threatening, you know, would contact the principals or the school contacts. If it is something that's life-threatening, it'll, it'll call, you know, the Police Department. We've had, we had a system before. We've had a program called Anonymous Alerts that we've been a part of. And it, I gotta say, if anyone ever asks me about Anonymous Alerts, it's a good program. The one concern that we've always had about it is the fear of ever missing an alert. And I know, you know, Jack and I, you know, woke up one morning in a panic because we got, you know, a message about a student who was, you know, thinking of self-harm or had seen one of their friends post some troubling things online. And, you know, that was sent to us at like 1:00 in the morning. So the nice thing about the Say Something Anonymous Response System with the Sandy Hook Promise program is it goes to a call center, so that wouldn't, that would never, there's someone manning that 24 hours a day. It gets, that would be an immediate call to the, to the Police Department. And then the third, the third program is a program called SOS, which is Signs of Suicide, which teaches staff and students to, to look for and address students who, you know, may have thoughts of self-harm. There is a screener involved in that. It's a very brief, I think it was seven questions, Laura, screener that, that does ask kids, you know, that question. I think there, the research has overwhelmingly shown that asking a kid if he's ever contemplated self-harm or suicide does not increase their chances of doing it, but it gives us information for our, you know, guidance staff and whatnot to intervene. So those are the, those are the three programs.
Joe, we, we paid for Anonymous Alerts.
We paid for Anonymous Alerts.
And this through the grant would be free?
This would be free.
Yeah, and I agree, we should move forward to those three programs.
Great. We're, I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused. We're applying for the grants?
No, no. The grant is, the state of Connecticut already has a grant through the Department of Justice to basically roll this out to any school in the state of Connecticut.
And whoever wants it?
And whoever wants it, yeah. And there's a number of, there's, I don't even know how many schools, but there's, they have it broken up in regions of the state. I think we're in Region 1, which is one of the first, one of the first groups for it to get rolled out, too. So, yeah.
So we're not going to lose, use Anonymous Alerts anymore?
We have Anonymous Alerts. We're still in the transition, so we will, we've already paid for Anonymous Alerts this year, but we will not, we will not pay for Anonymous Alerts next year.
Okay. Dinosaurs in the hallway?
Yeah, they're prehistoric.
Great, thank you. Anything else, Joe?
No, that was all.
All right. We will move on. Do I have a motion to flip-flop old business and presentation so we can get the policies that we've been like stuck on out of the way? And then we'll move on and just do budget and then approve the budget and, you know, and make it flow? Do I have a motion to flip-flop those? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second? Thank you, Nick. Any discussion on flipping old business to Number 8 and then presentations to Number 9 so we can approve the policies? All in favor? Great, thank you. So now move Number 8 is the old policies, and these are up for second review and voted anticipated. The first one is Policy 5131.911, which is bullying. The second one is 4118.112, workplace harassment and discrimination. And finally, Policy 3290.1, which is fund management. Do I have a motion to approve these policies as presented? Thank you, Shannon. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry. Any discussion of questions on these? I mean, I know they were from a number of meetings ago.
Updates.
These are?
Bringing us up to date.
Yes. Yes, a lot of them are the CAPE updates, right, George? Yeah. Yeah, state law. I know, I think these were in November, I mean, not in November, December as our first review, so I know it's been a while.
And we had talked about, I don't know if you've got any more information on the videos from CHRO, but maybe we can talk about that.
They're up and running.
Are they? Great.
And there's a quit, there's a certification, a certificate you can apply to through the CHRO to prove you've done it, so you can put it in your file, your personnel file.
Oh, for the?
There's a training.
For the sexual harassment training?
Because previously, sexual harassment training was only required for administrators in schools. Now, the new state law, it's any, any company that hires more than three people.
Right. All, everybody has to complete it by October 1?
Yes.
Or face penalty. But the online training works, right?
Yeah. The online training would, yeah.
It's a two-hour online training from the commission, and then once you do it and you submit your name, you can get a certificate to put in personnel folders because also in the law, the commission has the right to enter any establishment and ask about compliance. I don't know if the commission's going to enforce that, but it's always good to be ready.
Right. I would imagine, given the fact that they are penalizing the employers who do not have all their employees, there's an incentive there for revenue stream, so I'm sure they will probably have that.
We were questioned about that, and so when you file a complaint with the CHRO for a state-level matter, you can dual-file with the EEOC, and the CHRO is an agent of the EEOC. So if we complete their cases, EEOC gives us money. So we said, oh, instead of going in and trying to find people who didn't comply with SB3, why don't you give us another attorney so we can up our EEOC contract? And they were, oh, good idea. So they gave us another attorney, and our EEOC contract is now up because EEOC doesn't have the staff to complete dual, dual filings.
Now we just need to know what those acronyms mean.
Well, I was just thinking, would it help you guys? Like, because I know some of you are trained to be trainers.
We did it, yeah.
But if people can take it online, then might free, you might be able to sleep.
Yeah, you know, we, we've been talking about it as administrators and thinking about how we can roll it out. So, yeah, a number of us did go through the initial training, but if that's a viable option, you know, it's much more attractive.
CHRO.CT.gov, right on the front page, and it takes you through all the steps.
But is that just for municipalities and Boards of Education? That's not for every company?
That's for every company.
Really?
Yep.
Because like in New York, you get charged eight bucks a person to go on to get certified. Company has to pay.
Don't give the state any ideas.
Seriously. Yeah, the New York model was part of the bill, and it was compromised out. So the goal was to make it an unfunded mandate to, to not make it an unfunded mandate to everyone. So the compliance portion is, it's just people's time.
Okay. Great, thank you so much. An update.
That's good.
All right. Any other discussion on these policies? All in favor? Thank you, motion passes. All right. Now we will move on to Item 8, which is Presentations, which will be the 2021 budget and continuation. Now, I, I had sent out to everybody, and some people did, in fact, send in questions to be prepared for this evening on updates that they wanted to see and information they wanted. I think I emailed that out to everybody just so that everybody would have it. A lot of it, I know, came from Jeff, and Jeff isn't here, but a lot of it did come from Jeff with regard to athletics. So does everybody want to start or wait? I'm not sure what time Jeff is getting here.
Seven o'clock or 7:15. So didn't we have a bunch of questions that we didn't get answered during the last meeting? Should we start there instead?
We can start wherever. We can start wherever. We can also start Special Education because that was also a big question, so, and stuff, so.
If it's possible to wait for the Jeff, wait for Jeff, for the Jeff questions, and we could start with the other stuff?
Yeah. Darlene, you want to start with Special Education, then?
Well, we did, I did talk to Linda.
Yeah, sure, please.
I did talk with Linda today, and I did give her numbers, because I know one of the questions was moving forward, Nick, that was your question, and the 900 number, you know, how is that, how is that going to help for next year? So we did put additional numbers in the budget today for that, for that purpose, and that would include some changes in program and some changes in transportation to date. So what we have, so what we have right now that wasn't budgeted for back in October.
And do you have a spreadsheet on that?
I, I don't have, I have, I gave Joe a couple of spreadsheets, and I was asked for a couple of different ones, so tell me what you would need, and I will.
So what we would need is what's the spreadsheet of what was budgeted in this budget compared to now where we stand and what the variance of that is?
So I do, I'm just going to have to make you guys copies of that, okay?
It just, is the thing that's up behind you?
Yeah.
Is this it?
This has, this has part of it, I believe.
I can't see that far.
And you could email it, too, if it's easier, like, easier to email it electronically and save our copies or something, too?
I mean, this was just, this was just a, this is our running, running list of cuts. So at the last meeting, we kind of made a wholesale $102,000 change to the $600,000, the 600, 6,000 series. I think $23,000 of that was in electricity. And then the other $79,000, these guys, once again, have been awesome. And we've gone through and identified, you know, they've gone through their budgets and taken things out, taken things out, taken things out. So that, you know, if I pull this up, it's all these lines.
Where do we start?
Oh, boy.
Oh, my God.
So they went through and did all the line items?
Did, went through all the lines in the 6,000s. Let's see, let's see. Starts right here on line, on this one right here, and it, it goes down from there. Those are all the.
And you have electricity taken out somewhere?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I just can't see.
What's everything above that line, though, Joe?
Those were the previous stuff.
Those were the cuts that we've been making as we've been going along. So we went through the 1,000 series, the 2,000 series, the 3,000 series.
Everything above line 46?
Yeah.
Is cuts that we made during the, the working sessions?
The work sessions before.
Okay. And then everything below that line is?
From?
From the last meeting.
The last meeting.
Supply, supply.
Right. They took what we, we asked in the 79,000 in supplies.
I was really uncomfortable when we said, hey, just cut 79,000 from supply. So, you know, that was Thursday night, Friday, and even all the way up until this afternoon.
So you tied it to actual line items?
Tied it to actual line items, so we don't just have, you know, a $79,000 number at the bottom of it.
All right, what's the top-line number, though? That's, is that the top, if you go back to, if you go all the way to the top? That's where we started at? That was what we submitted?
This is when, yeah, the first, this is, none of these have been changed. This is before any submissions. These are as we started going through on that very first night when we started going through the 1,000 series. That was, you know, the salary adjustment to the Director of Finance position and all the changes we've been, we've been making in these workshops.
Everything added and?
Added and.
Puts and takes since, since we started the process.
Right. So like you can see, we have, after the, the budget was submitted, in December, we had a teacher retire, so you have all the ins and outs for that teacher, you know, and so on and so forth.
So this, yeah, it started out at $60,505.
$60,505. And where are we now?
More than that. And this is why, so we went through, we got through the, I think it was about, oh, it actually came up to a little bit more than $79,000 in cuts. I forget exactly how much in the supplies line. So we got all that out. So we were at, once we got through supplies, we were at $60,389. And what's read, and this goes to, this goes to Nick's question, and do I think the stuff Darlene was just addressing? You know, at the last meeting, we talked about two new programs that, you know, when Kay and Darlene did the budget in October, November, you know, didn't exist.
Can I ask a question? So Darlene?
Yes.
The sped lines, those add up to 171.
Those are, those are the new costs, yes.
So those are the costs for the budget year, for the budget year?
Right.
But the cost in the current fiscal year that we're in deficit by, we added about 200K?
Right.
Okay. So that 171 is making up for the 200K in this year of the new stuff that we know?
Correct.
Again, however, even adding the 171 to the 950, that's based on students we have.
Correct.
So should any new students move in over the summer and none move out, that will increase sped costs more over the budget amount?
Correct.
Which is how we've gotten in the last few, few years.
That's what happens.
What's happened.
That's what happens every year.
It's a, it's a moving target.
Right. I mean, when budgeting, we always bet, budget on actual numbers, so we don't, we don't put in extra students, we don't, you know.
Contingency.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, there is no contingency.
And well, contingency's on the town side.
Yes.
Right.
They, they build in a contingency in the town budget for, well, for lots of different things, but one of that is special, income is a special.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I do have, I do have a spreadsheet that I, that I did work on to show you what the December's numbers were, except that I can't bring it up to print it out. The December numbers were and what it is now. So when we get, when we got to that 500 number, I have that actual sheet that I can email to you or print it up for you, so.
All these ones where we went through, and it was double-counted, or we found that it hasn't been spent on, that line hasn't been spent on for two-plus years?
Yeah, those are.
That's all included here?
Yes. Yeah.
So we really got nowhere with that overall. We just offset the increase.
Some of the things that we.
We chewed it up, though.
We did chew it up.
Some of the things that we did happen to, like fines, and I'll give an example of this. So if you looked at payroll taxes, which is page 90, we were concerned about two of the items, which was one that was marked Chalk Hill and one that was marked Town Hall. Well, those actually are the payroll taxes. The problem is that the other ones are automatically populated from the salary accounts and automatically calculate the taxes, but there's certain salary accounts that don't calculate. So did you bring that one on, the Val, that big spreadsheet that Val put together?
For payroll taxes? I didn't bring that. Definitely something I'd want to probably share with Ron first to make sure it's.
Right. So Val put together, and I don't know if I have it here, Val put together a whole analysis of spreadsheet of how she actually calculates the taxes, and those are correct. They are mislabeled items. So it's really.
The money's correct, they're labeled in the wrong spots.
They're labeled incorrectly as we found.
Which is what we thought.
Well, as we found out is, oh, here it is.
Like, just so, because.
Here's the thing that she put together, so, of the calculation. So what ended up happening is they found that because those, those accounts were not used, then they put them there so that they could easily identify what those taxes are and what they belong to. So they aren't not mistakes.
But they should've renamed them instead of?
And they did.
Yeah.
Linda went back and renamed them to what they correctly are, because it was just a line to, um, the line is mislabeled. It has nothing to do with Chalk Hill. It has to do, it has to do with payroll, but payroll in accounts that don't actually automatically calculate, um, the, the taxes.
So, unfortunately, we didn't gain that forty-five thousand.
Correct.
It's just.
Correct.
It's actual spent for, for something else, for the stipend payroll taxes or something like that, right?
Right, right, Linda can tell you what accounts, do you remember?
It was for miscellaneous items like stipends and whatnot, uh, it was consolidation of those taxes that were going to that one.
Right.
And since that line wasn't being used, cause it was Chalk Hill, that was like a, a place that you could put it, that it wouldn't override, and I guess that's why that line was used in the past.
And the other thing was, you need to remember, like, so Val went through this very detailed calculation, because within stipends, you have staff in stipends. Who are teachers who do not, are not subject to, uh, FICA social security, but then you have outside people in stipends who are subject to that. So, Val has this full detailed spreadsheet and calculating it on differences, and that's where that all goes.
I know we were hoping to save money, but you have to give kudos to central office for making this as transparent as it is now.
Yes.
It doesn't matter what it was, what they've done is countless hours to make sure that when anybody looks at it, they can, you know, granted, we wanted to save money, I understand that. But at least it's clear now.
It is, they, they put in.
It was countless hours, and I thank you guys for that.
Countless hours.
Yeah, countless, I know that.
We, we were down there in central office and I was blown away by the work that, uh, that the department has done, and I, and I wanna say thank you.
Oh, I, I applaud you guys also, it was a lot of work and I appreciate it.
A lot of hard work and grit and dedication and, and just spread thin and thank you.
Can I ask a question, Darlene's coming back now, so, um, have we in the past adjusted the special ed numbers this late in the cycle? To include the current year's unplanned expense?
No, because this budget would've already been gone already.
Okay.
To the first selectmen, um, after the first meeting. So, if it was in the old cycle, we wouldn't even have had this update, because these are new things that have occurred over the last two weeks. And we would've voted on that budget, um, based on the old chartered, um, timeline by the third and sent it off.
So, it's, it's, from a, from a, from a budgetary standpoint, in terms of, of, you know, the overall number, it's not, not good. But at least we have that now in plan, whereas in pla, in the past, it would've been unplanned expense.
Correct, correct, we wouldn't have, we would've probably not, unless it had occurred before that first meeting in October. And, I'm sorry, that first meeting in January, when we would've voted on the budget, if we didn't know that at that point, because it happened on January fifteenth, it would, we would not have included it.
I think Kay had said that the last, um, time that they go to, to, uh, try to determine what it's gonna be is December, mid-December.
When they do.
But by that point, we're already, we're already in.
Right.
In the throes of it, and it's already locked and loaded.
Right, the, the last time they do it is when they do the filing to the state for the reimbursement, and then there's a true-up in March.
Right.
Right.
So, at least we have that in plan now.
Yes.
Nick? Can I just make a request through the chair that, um, when we get our monthly financials, would it be possible to have this?
Absolutely.
Updated monthly, because then, there's, no one can say, I didn't know. Because if we see four fifty-eight.
Is this a good format for you?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
I think it's great.
You know, if we see five thirty-six and the next month it's larger, then we have, there's a document, and then you can explain the difference. And so, when next year's budget comes? It won't be so, if, if this sheet is not too onerous to keep up?
No.
Thank you.
It's a lot of help, it's great help.
And Darlene, the, um, the, the numbers, you're working on next year's per pupil estimate too, right? Because I know in the past, we were working on former years per pupil, so I just wanted to make sure that we were, we fixed that issue.
Yeah, and so the way it was done was an average.
Five-year average, what the percentage would be.
It did still come up a little short.
With a little increase?
Yep.
Oh, it did.
This year.
Eight figures.
It did come up a little short when we, when we, um, did the average, so.
So, an average plus an increase, an expected increase, right?
So, um, they, they do give us the excess cost number, um, that per, per pupil in December. So, before we do our filing or late, late November, so, before we do the filing, we have that number. So, um, we, we do know what that number is now, we filed in December first, um, we can true-up, like Donna said, in March. So, if there are other expenditures for students who already qualify, it has to be students that were already on that December list. If there are other expenses, we can true-up at that time, and it may, or may not, if there's our excess cost.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we included that average plus whatever increase it is giving us next year's per pupil, and that we're budgeting on that, not, not like we did in the past, so, okay.
Right, yeah, yes, it was definitely done differently than we've done it in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you, does anybody else have any other questions?
No.
All right, so, let's go back, um, over other questions that I know we had asked, um, and we'll give Jeff some more time to get here for his questions. Um, cause most of those deal with him, but let's go to the outstanding items and questions that we had from last meeting. Do you have that list, Joe?
I don't, no. I don't.
Was that part of the email that came out?
I have the email today, but.
I think so.
That's the email today of other things that people wanted, I thought there was a list of items from last time.
So, we raised a bunch of items last meeting.
Right.
Uh, we didn't have answers to everything.
Was it in the, beyond the six thousands?
Well, I know. I know we took care of the six thousands. Did you, um, did you also go back and look more at the conference fees?
I did, yeah, yeah, the, uh, that was, that, that's what I was gonna say, that was the only other one I, I knew of, was we had. I know, um, I know Maria gave me the, uh, the invoices for the conference fees, that's on page two forty.
Right, the ten thousand eight hundred is definitely the, um.
That was for the, uh, that was for this year. So, this year, we had had a, uh, at the last meeting, we talked about, we had a year-to-date of, of thirty-six thousand, so if I'm, I'm on page two forty right now. If you took out ten thousand from that, because ten thousand was from the study?
Right.
That put us at about, it, it was ten thousand and change, so I put us at like twenty-five, seven fifteen, so I cut the thirty-two, thirty-five down to.
And that's in there.
Down to, down to twenty-five, seventy-five, and that's also on, on the cut sheet, so I apologize, I think I put stuff on the cut sheet to address some of those questions.
Oh, okay, um, so, I thought we also, so that was took care of dues and subscriptions, did we ever find out going back? Remember in the page before, the caps, the caps one for forty-one hundred? I know I got the emails that tied to the A twelve, the five fifty, the six fifty, the eighteen, three ninety-eight. But I don't remember getting the one that tied to that forty-one hundred caps one for the superintendent ones.
The forty, which, okay.
So, when, when, um, when you guys sent out all the invoices?
Yeah.
It was the ones that fell under.
Under that one there.
This one, dues and fees, central office. But I don't remember seeing the one that, the invoice, um, for the forty-one hundred.
I don't know if you guys can pull that up quickly, well, probably not quickly on that, but, do you see where we are on page two thirty-nine?
Two thirty-nine, so that all tied, and Joe, you made that adjustment already to the sheet, right?
This, this one, yes.
Yes, but on two forty. Uh-oh.
Yeah, just got cut off.
It's spinning.
Uh-oh.
Just kicked me off the gun there.
Do you have questions, do you have questions around, energy came up, right, we talked about energy, so.
We talked, we, we cut twenty-three thousand out of electricity.
Okay.
That's on the cut sheet.
Yeah, that's on the cut sheet.
Yep, we did talk about that, I think we had some questions on the buses, Joe, did, were you able to get in contact with them?
Yeah, I talked to, uh, I talked to Mike Lawler today, um, I mean, the, the long answer is, uh, we pay three hundred and seventy dollars a day for a bus.
We pay three seventy a day, per day for a bus?
Yeah, times one hundred and eighty-two days, so you're looking at about. Sixty, sixty-seven thousand. The, the, the big question, um, I didn't even ask him, because I know the question you're gonna ask, and the answer's no, is he, he doesn't see a possibility to, uh, to eliminate a bus for next year. The, uh, we eliminated a bus, uh, two or three years ago, um, and he said, right now, especially, uh, on the second tier, which is the one that brings Jockey Hollow in Monroe Elementary, and he said the buses are packed, you'd never, it wasn't even, I was, I was concerned about the kids being on the bus too long. You know, would we violate statute, and he said, that's not the issue, we just don't, wouldn't have enough buses to get the kids.
Okay.
Or if we moved Jockey Hollow into the tier of Masek?
Uh, that's a good question.
And is that?
I think it would, I, I mean, I think that'd be challenging, but, um. If we, if we, if we move Jockey Hollow into the tier with Masek, I, I don't know if that would, I, I don't know how much, uh, it could help us out a little bit, because the, uh, Jockey Hollow goes in with Monroe Elementary, so.
So, you would.
Are you saying, are you saying have the kids on, um, the same bus?
You may even be able to do it without doing that, right? Because you have such, so, such a small population of Masek using the bus.
But you have to hold seats for them, even if they don't use it.
But you gotta hold seats for every student.
That's the question, did you ever find out if you have to hold a seat for every high school student?
Um, I did not, no.
I think that's the biggest question.
I've heard that we, I'm not sure.
There's this like, I don't know, I've heard, I've heard con, con, conflicting information. I've heard conflicting information that, yes, you have to have a seat for every child, and then I, then, uh, we're talking specifically high school, not other kids. Um, then I've heard, no, you really don't, I don't know, I'm very conflic, confused on it.
Maybe if we can, if we can put a procedure around an opt-in?
Mm-hmm.
At the start of the school year, and Masek students opt-in for the bus, right? And then you move Jockey Hollow into that tier, you probably can run with the same number of buses, right?
But what are you looking at, like, three hundred and seventy dollars for the year for?
I'll, I'll date myself, but when I served, when I served on the state transportation committee, you couldn't, because Masek kids could drive in the spring, but not in the winter.
Right.
Parents wouldn't allow them to drive when it was a bad day. So, then you had to have, now, I haven't been on the committee in years, so I don't know if it's changed, but back then, you had to have a seat for them, just because of weather. That was the issue.
Okay, and I'm, I'm, I don't know what the state.
I don't either, I don't know.
This is what it says, cause I'm looking this up as you guys are talking. It says, state law requires school districts, and this is updated on February sixth, two thousand and twelve. So, I don't know if there's anything more up to date than this, um. It says, state law requires school districts to provide transportation for all school-aged children whenever it is reasonable and desirable. In general, this requirement is limited to transportation to public and certain nonprofit private schools located within the school district. The only out-of-district transportation school districts must provide us for students attending state technical high schools and district-designated regional ac, agricultural, science, and technology centers. Within these requirements, local and regional boards of education retain discretion over district transportation policies, including the number of school buses, bus routes, and stops. And students to whom they will provide transportation at maximum walking distances. The S D E has issued guidelines for district policy, but they're not mandatory. The state provides an annual grant to local school districts that reimburse them for part of the cost of providing public school transportation. Reimbursement percentages vary from zero to sixty percent, depending on relative wealth of the town or towns making up the district. Um, the state also provides additional funds for school districts, regional education service centers, and other entities that provide transportation for students attending certain schools outside their home district. I would imagine that, um, do we get any reimbursement based on our wealth?
Any idea?
Right, so we're probably in zero, but I'm sure that we also don't qualify for walking distance either.
I'm thinking, I'm wondering, I think it's a question, not a statement, but I'm wondering if the, if we're applying like the common sense approach, is this gonna be like administrators and, and staff spending all kinds of time and getting phone calls from parents and changing to save like maybe one bus and three hundred, you know, not?
Oh, it's gonna be, cause if we change Fon Hall to Masek, what we're all forgetting is these Fon Hall kids are gonna be in when the Masek kids are in.
No.
No, Jockey Hollow. Jockey Hollow, but still, it might not be that much, it might cost us more than it would save us in terms of, you know, time.
So, I think we probably figure out what the process is for, for doing that, right? But I, I think that the point is, it, it sounds like it's discretionary, right?
Well, no, it goes on, there goes on to say, it says that the school accom, that, it said, it says the law requires boys of education to furnish by transportation or otherwise. Um, school accommodation so that each child five years of age and over and under twenty-one years of age, who are not, who have not graduated from high school or vocational school. So, the law further states that each board of education must provide each child who is, is of school age and residing in the, uh, the district an opportunity to attend public school. And provide transportation for children whenever it's reasonable and desirable. Whatever that, what, I think that is called one of those vague in, interpretations by the state of what is actually considered reasonable and, um, desirable.
So, based on that, what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna suggest, Jerry, one sec, is that we have the bus company, uh, give us a, uh, a review of moving Jockey Hollow to the Masek tier. And then potentially realigning Monroe Elementary. And what that would do, how we could be more efficient if we did that.
Okay.
So, would the middle school kids ride with the high school kids? Is that what you're proposing? I don't know that you need to, well, you could, you, you could have to do that. So, I don't think that, um, go over too well in the community.
And I don't, uh, what do you call it, I, there's, I think all, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe somebody knows this, is all of our buses run on tier one?
I don't believe all of them run on tier one, and that's the other thing, if you can cut off a, a bus at one tier, it doesn't, you're not saving any money. Cause they, if they're still needed for the other two tiers, you're still paying, that, that's one thing Mike told me today, yeah.
You're still paying the three seventy per day regardless of.
You're paying the three seventy for the.
Right, I think my point was that Masek is, is underutilized for the number of buses that we have, right? You don't, those buses are not full.
Mm-hmm.
So, if we move Jockey Hollow into that tier, can we, uh, shrink the number of buses in our overall fleet? Right, down, downstream from there?
Mm-hmm.
That would, that's my, that's what I would like to find out from the bus company.
Do you want me to invite Mike Lawler to the, to the next meeting to talk about it, or would you be comfortable if I just get your information?
I'm comfortable if you have the conversation.
Okay, okay.
So, bottom line is, cutting a run saves nothing, cause it doesn't matter, you're paying for a day.
You're still paying, yeah.
We tried this year, years ago, if you all remember, with a certain superintendent flashing the buses, and it really didn't get us anywhere. And you all, most of you sat here for that, if you remember, and it didn't work.
Foot flashing the buses?
Yeah, we cut all runs, we consolidated runs, I'm sure you remember what I'm talking about.
If you take buses out of the fleet though, that's what I would wanna understand, is, with each bus that you take out of the fleet, wha, what is that, what's that cost impact, right?
I think he said.
If you take it completely out of the fleet?
Three seventy, seven thousand.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're taking out the three seventy times one hundred and eighty-two days, yeah.
But is, but on tier three, which is the two elementary schools, are all the buses running?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, what's, is Masek our largest fleet, or is the elementary schools?
Um, no, no, Masek is, I, I know, Masek is the largest fleet, cause it has, Masek and the middle school are the largest fleets, because they have to cover the whole, they have to cover the whole town.
Were you taking Monroe L?
Yeah, Monroe L, I mean, when I pull in, there's like five bu.
Right, cause you're running that with Jockey Hollow.
Yeah, when I walk out here, you know, we walk out of Masek at, at the end of the day, there's twenty B, twenty buses.
So, if you can consolidate Masek buses, that will bring you the.
Well, we need to know how many the Stepney and, and Fon Hall was running, because even if you consolidate and you drop off a bus, but if it's needed on tier three? It doesn't matter, because you're still paying for the whole day, you're not paying per run, you're paying for one bus.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if Masek has your largest fleet, then you could still, if you can consolidate, it depends, I don't know, it would be a.
And if the, the other thing about looking at consolidating this year is that if the projections are true, and Fon Hall, Monroe L, and Stepney are gonna need another classroom, like if the enrollment's supposed to tick up.
Enrollment's going up.
At the elementary level, in the next four to five years, you might need another bus in two or three years? That you could save this year and then supplant it that way in the out-years, so it might be worth it, so you don't have this huge shift in two to three years. So it might be worth it, so you don't have this huge shift in two to three years.
I think these are the things that we need to work on past tonight.
Yes.
Yes.
So that no matter what we do tonight, we still need to find efficiencies and, and just continue to work on it. There's a lot to do, we're not gonna nail it tonight, but these, these are all things that we need to continually work at.
Right, and we need to understand what, what's the phrasing again? Reasonable and desirable really mean? If we can maybe ask Mike Waller, I'm assuming he, running the bus operation understands, you know, what that whole thing is, and do we need to provide a seat for every child, because the way I read it, you do, but then they have the, that phrasing at the end, so I don't know if that ma- makes that change. I mean, I'm reading exactly what the laws re- states, but I'm reading that if you have any children, any children from five to twenty-one who's in school, you must provide a seat for. On a bus, that's reasonable.
Desirable.
And desirable, whatever that means.
So Joe, from the last meeting, you, you took the notes, and we've addressed all the notes that came out of that meeting.
That's what I, yeah, and that's what we had done on the, on the cut sheet, so I didn't have any other notes. What I'm gonna do after tonight is, any questions you have, I'm gonna email to you guys tomorrow and just to confirm, because I don't, I don't want to be in a position where.
I think the only one I thought we were looking into not, so, did you find the forty-one hundred? Thank you.
Um, so it's a, it's a captain voice, it totals four thousand one sixty-two, it's for superintendent, it says dues primary, three thousand five fifty-seven is in charge. And then it says active membership for A A S A, uh, four hundred and sixty dollars, and dues for N V A S S for thirty-five dollars. So it's basically all the fees for superintendent, one individual, four thousand one sixty-two.
They're professional, professional dues for that person.
For caps.
For caps.
And what was the N E F F again? How much was that?
S T A S S was thirty-five dollars.
S S.
New England Association of Superintendents, something like that, because there's two organizations, right? Am I right?
It doesn't spill it out, but.
It sounds like you have the words in the right order.
Yeah, I think, I, I remember them saying.
Is this the one where the superintendent was a lot more than the assistant superintendent?
Yes, the assistant superintendent was like eight hundred and twelve dollars, but this one was forty-one sixty-two.
It does say primary one on this particular, so I wonder if the first person, primary.
I'm sure, yeah.
Larger charge, and then.
And they give you a discount for the second.
I thought we were also just looking at, um, not dues, but also conference fees, I thought you, we were going, you were gonna look back at.
We are, yeah, and I think that's one of the things we wanna do as we keep looking for efficiencies here, is align all the conference fees with the, across all the schools. And do it as a per, a per staff member fee, I think we were coming up with a number of like thirty-five dollars per staff member, not that, that's enough to cover a conference, but not everyone goes to a conference either, and that got us down, so that's.
I think that's also one of the, as David said, that's one of those conversations you would have between now and, instead of tonight, you have really three months until you get to like a final vote on a board of finance, we still have those ten.
Things we're looking into to.
Ten or eleven weeks, yeah.
Make fine.
Alright, well, Jeff is here now, so we held off the athletics discussion, um, where is John? Heidi? Alright, come on up, John, are you going on the board?
I have one slide for you.
Okay.
Alright, what I have up there for you guys is, what we have in the budget now, this is for, for moving forward to next year, twenty twenty-one. The projected, you know, we have a surcharge of two fifty as it is now, and that projected revenue is from the surcharges, a hundred and ninety thousand. That hundred and ninety thousand, it's a slight, slight change from how we've done before in the past, because in the last couple of years, it's been skewed in the wrong direction in terms of the projections for surcharge, a little bit low. In other words, we haven't been collecting as much as our, as our, as our historical projection has usually provided us a good number. So, and this year we did three-year average, and it was like a hundred and eighty-nine three-year average and like five hundred, so it's one ninety that I have up there. And those are our gate receipts of twenty thousand and change, so that would be the projected Board of Educa- Education contribution of four hundred and seventy-one thousand. That's six eighty-two, two thirty-one includes the, the buses for boys and girls tennis that we reduced, I think, last week. So that is what it currently is. So, uh, I, if we increase the surcharge in fifty-dollar increments, uh, to three hundred, three fifty, four hundred, there you see the changes of the projected revenues going down, so the surcharge is two twenty-seven seventy-four, if we ru- move it to three hundred, that is not a dollar-to-dollar projection. What I had to do there is I had to use the normal historical rate that I have used in terms of discounting it based upon family caps, based upon waivers, uh, per sport, uh, through fall, winter, and spring. And then what I did is I discounted a little bit further based upon the last three-year average, because I said it wasn't, you know, we were down a little, usually it was like between a couple percent either way, which is, which is good from year to year. But this was five percent and seven percent reduction in the last years, which didn't make me comfortable. So I used a three-year average off of that, so I reduced it a little bit further to get a little bit more conservative. So the reduction in the Board of Contribution, moving left to right there, if we moved it to three hundred thousand, is projected thirty-seven, seven seventy-four. And then you see the difference each year, if you go all the way to four hundred, uh, with the surcharge, it would be around a hundred and thirteen thousand with this, with the reduction.
So when you went from two fifty to three hundred in your projected revenue column, did you project any reduction in students doing sports? Like the increase in price would reduce the.
Well, I, I, you know, I sort of, that's a tough question, uh, yes and no. I, that's why you have sort of the discount in there.
Okay.
Um, based upon my projected rates over since, going back fifteen years, you know, doing this. And then I added, because I said, in the last two or three years, it's been going down a little bit too much in terms of, uh, keeping that percentage actually the way it is, and that's why I went to three-year average. Uh, so I discounted a little further. It's hard to tell, because in the times that we have discounted, one time, I think it was oh-four, oh-five, it went down a little bit. And then it seems the participation rate goes up, it sort of comes back up again. And then when you hit it with an increase in surcharge, it drops, and then it goes back, and you know, you'll see that. But you know what, if I tell you exact, it's, it will dip, if we, if we, it will dip, I'm pretty sure of that. I hope it doesn't, but I'm pretty sure it will. How much, it'd be, I don't know, and I, because there's different kids. Alright, two thousand and four is a different time than two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, number three sport athletes has decreased a little bit uh, over that period of time, a lot more things to do. So, I don't know, you know, all I know is I'm pretty sure it will dip, and I do have those numbers, I give you that every year, if you see uh, the participation numbers that I attach to my budget every year, it gives you the surcharge amount, and it gives you those unique and total numbers, so you can just refer back to that. I did add one back from two thousand and five, two thousand and six, I, the surcharge, I think, was, was not there over the years. I went back and dug that out today, and I put it over, you know, today, and I put that in for an updated sheet, so you can see those numbers. Yeah.
This is, sorry, just a quick question, is this per, this is per student, per sport? Or is this per student for the year?
Oh, no, it's per student, per sport.
Okay.
Yeah, so you have to pay two fifty.
So three sport, a three-sport athlete, how much do they, would they pay in sum for the year?
Seven fifty, family cap right now is seven fifty.
I thought it was a thousand.
Family cap, so multiple kids too? But family cap right now is seven fifty?
Family cap's seven fifty.
Okay. Okay.
I thought the family cap was a thousand.
Of course, you got on the. Because we never really hit it.
No, I think it is seven fifty.
I think it, it was a thousand at one point, and then I think we brought it down to seven fifty, I could check on that.
Yeah, please.
Not many people hit it anymore, buddy, I, I'll check on that, it's a quick check on my.
Do you have numbers on what similar districts or, you know, the pay-to-play, have you done any research on?
Yeah, yeah, I can give you a copy that, we've done an analysis in the last uh, six months, just, just going through it, you know, over the years, originally we were one of the, you know, there were, there were, there were a lot of people that had, there were a lot of towns that had surcharge, but it wasn't as widespread as it is now. Take for example, right now Shelton is three hundred, uh, we're two fifty, Ridgefield is two fifty, Talon two hundred, uh, Newtown's one sixty, Pomperock High School's one fifty, uh, New Milford and New Fairfield, out of our league, are a hundred. I could share with you this one, I have quite a few towns from, not only our league, our league is all highlighted in red and all the others are just in, in black, but I could, I could share with you this document that I have right here.
Can you just tell us the ones that are our, are in our?
In our league?
Yeah, sure.
Alright, we have, Stratford is, they don't have a surcharge, Stratford and Brookley, uh, Brookley, Brookfield do not have a surcharge. Joe Barlow is at sixty-five, um, Weston is at one hundred, Bethel is at one hundred, uh, New Fairfield and New Milford, as I said, is at one hundred, Pomperock one fifty, Newtown one sixty, and then we are at two fifty, and we keep on asking the other athletic districts, because they're going through the budget process as well, that may change, change as well.
And, and how about surrounding towns, like what is, you said, I mean Shelton is three hundred.
Shelton is three hundred, Trumbull's at eighty, uh, Cheshire's not surrounded, but it's at one twenty-five, uh, Milford is zero.
Those are some of the surrounding towns that you would say. So we're doubling, we're looking at going up.
Yeah, we can't.
No, no, no. You know what else? I wonder if there's a direct correlation between the number, so if you raise those rates, then you're gonna have less students participating. And that is not good for a variety of reasons, but in addition to that, you're probably gonna have less gate revenue as well, because not as many kids, and not as many parents, siblings, and families, and friends coming out to support people, so probably, you know, I, I'm not in favor, I don't wanna raise it, and I'm thinking that your projected gate receipts would decrease as you increased the surcharge.
It could, I've never did an analysis on that, on those, those couple of years at a Dupree's, you know, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that.
Yeah, yeah, there's probably no algorithm in the computer to generate that, but I just, I just think like a com- get a common sense thing, I just, yeah.
And it's just for those sports, it's for, it's for girls and boys' basketball and football.
She's the only one that's above us, we know what they do with their Board of Ed budget, right? So, they're trying to, they're trying to cover, so.
That's a point of dimension, it turns, I think, at one point, I think, we were up to three ninety for affiliated sports and three fifty for non-affiliated sports.
That is crap.
No, I don't wanna see a job, I don't think any one of us probably would wanna see a job in that.
I would leave it. Is, so there's nobody around our, our, except for Shelton, that's really around our.
It's, it's Ridgefield, two fifty, uh.
Ridgefield's two fifty.
Talon is two hundred, East Scramby two hundred, these are the ones that are high, West Hartford one seventy-five.
But we're already on that.
And it doesn't even, I was just listening to the districts, it doesn't even matter what dirge you're in, like it's across.
Right.
Yeah. Regions across dirges, it's all, you'd think that like dirge As would have lower pay-to-plays. Right, but it's really not there, so.
Even if one of them re- raised it up, they're not gonna be close to us.
Right.
This has been a struggle, in nineteen seventy-four, my junior year here, we started it, and they were hitting us up twenty dollars a person, and we were the only town in the state. And it's been a struggle since nineteen seventy-four with this stuff.
Wait, is that when you were teaching?
No, that was when I was in Massey as a junior. It was, that's how much it was a person, and it caused a firestorm then, because we were like the only town in the state that was charging a kid.
Anybody born after nineteen seventy-four? I'm with you, Jerry, I'm, you know, not, I'd be for nineteen seventy-four.
No, it's like when we went over to parking, we were gonna raise the parking, I mean, guys, you, 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 you gotta look at this stuff, it's not gonna help us.
Certain things aren't.
It's a cause and effect.
No, we can't.
It's not even worth touching.
No, it's not gonna help.
It's not worth it.
No.
No.
Leave it be.
Yep. But, uh, thank you for, for providing the information.
Can you just kind of check on the family max for me?
Yeah, absolutely.
A thousand dollar, it's. It is a thousand, thank you, I thought.
So it's running down. I do have it on the screen, it's a thousand dollars.
I thought it was seven fifty, because I remember like joking, if I had another kid playing, I would have been on more family caps.
Oh, were there more sports questions?
You did, you spaced about just enough, so you didn't read.
I don't have my computer, what was the other sports question you had?
Teams. I can read it out.
Yo, please stay up here.
Any more sports?
I think John answered the question about teams though.
Yep.
Right?
There's a question about the athletic trainer.
Oh, the athletic trainer.
I think he answered that, is, okay.
About the athletic trainer?
You thought you were working.
Yeah.
In terms of.
Is it required?
Uh, is it required, it's usually the, the phrase that you use in, in any handbook's appropriate, uh, medical personnel. My opinion, um, we would need one point five, alright, we have one right now, via matter of events that we cover. Varsity, a lot of times we have to double up, say we have a basketball game here and we have a hockey game at the rinks, we get two, we get extra coverage. Uh, just makes me more, feel more comfortable, and most, pretty much all high schools now have trainers, you know, back when I played, we did. You know, you know, when I coached Terrible twenty-three, twenty-four years ago, of Litchfield County, we didn't have a trainer. Um, I came to Massey in, in nineteen ninety-nine, it was the first time I ever had a trainer on the sideline, uh, and now it's more the norm. To the point where I take, for example, we had a freshman game where we had an issue, our freshmen, our, our trainer, we had double coverage, or, or, I, you know, one of our, our trainer could not get here, so we were getting coverage. The, the coverage trainer was only gonna be here like in the third quarter, fourth quarter, I had, I called the Shelton AD, like, you guys mind, you know, we'll get through the first, first half. Yeah, no problem, so it's, you know, when you don't have one on site, even for a freshman game with respect to those type things in basketball, you, you wanna call and let them know. You don't always have them, but we have them for all of our varsity contests, and sort of expect it from other teams.
I think the other question was regarding, um, cost savings for uniforms for athletics and all large purchases, purchases, excuse me, the mats for wrestling and track and field.
Yeah.
I think that was the other question.
Uh, is, so uniforms and, and the purchase for twenty twenty-one?
For twenty twenty-one.
I think if we were to, you know, cut all uniforms out and do the mat, which is approximately fifty-five hundred, I think it'd probably be around forty-one thousand dollars. I think our equipment is thirty-five, seven fifty, and I estimated the mat might be fifty-five hundred, so that's gonna be around forty-one and change, around there.
What would the impact be? That's what, that's what.
Well, the impact would be, well, now we, we've put aside the uniforms for the purchase for this year, you know, boys' and girls' basketball and softball. So we're pushing them back to next year, now we're gonna push not only those back, but the uniforms that were supposed to be purchased in next year, back. So now we're back almost one and a half seasons of, of pushback with uniforms, we keep on pushing the button.
It's the same thing with the technology plan.
Right.
Kick of the can, yeah.
Right, and what's the, what's the cycle again?
It's a five-year cycle.
Five years.
And you just, you break it out evenly over the five years, the number of uniforms that you replace, the sports that you replace? How is that broken out over the five-year periods?
Uh, it, well, we originally started it, I, I took the years when we bought those specific uniforms.
Yeah.
And sort of worked on a replacement cycle from there. Try to get it as even as possible, but that was really difficult to do, you know, you start to do that, and you sort of push it and move it around, and
Yeah.
You sort of get in a, a routine with those uniforms, with the budget.
And there's no way to get like sponsorship, right, like Under Armour or Nike to help the costs, right, because don't we have that for travel basketball?
There are certain things that you could sign on, say we could, we could become a Nike or an Armor, Under Armour school.
Do you get any savings from them?
Under Armour school.
Right.
Where you find your savings, that, sorry, is, a lot of times your uniforms could be, you know, a little bit more pricey, but you can get good deals on nice uniforms.
Right.
The problem, uh, is that you're sort of, you know, you're fixed into buying those uniforms for the most part. You get good coaching gear, you get other things that aren't top of it, maybe t-shirts, but I found over time that those uniforms, go out of, you know, they, they, they quickly change those, Nike, Adidas. So all of a sudden, in three years, I can't get those uniforms anymore.
Oh, so if you need.
And.
So if you need to add.
Yeah, so one of the usual things that, you know, especially our girls' volleyball uniforms that we bought this year, we are about to buy one, and our, you know, our vendor, who we, we know very well, has been very good to us, you know, I said, one more check, and make sure that we could get this. And they said, nope, and he came back, it's like, nope, like I forget exactly how long we had, so if we can't get those, let's go to the other one. So we had to get number two on our list that we wanted, because we could get those replacements.
But have you, did you ever do a cost analysis to see how much, like by going with Under Armour or Nike, with how much cheaper it would be, or no?
No, because I don't think it would be, you know, because the uniforms are, are just as expensive.
We have, we went with Under Armour, and it was a significant cost savings for us to go with them.
As opposed to Nike?
As opposed to, or, or just a no-name brand. I don't know.
I, I, a lot of times they'll give you deals and things like that, but over, over time, you know, you get nice uniforms for, for a, a better price, but sometimes ones that maybe, you know. But sometimes ones that maybe, as you said, that was been my secret, that you, that we can't find replacements within that five-year period. And then you come, then I, then I'll be coming in here three years, like I, I.
Three or four.
Those uniforms were destroyed. I need a whole new set of uniforms from Nike. So. But I, I, we do have people, I constantly talk to people who offer those things to us. So it's one of those things that I, you know, we have these conversations.
John, how do we line with the amount of sports that we offer compared to other schools in our con, our league or conference?
We are, we are fortunate. We offer pretty much everything across the game. So our, our student athletes have, have the ability to, to play almost anything they want. You know, we keep on adding certain things. But in terms of team sports, we pretty much have everything. You know, we even have, if student athletes wanna bowl, we find places for them to bowl. And you'll see that we have two or three every once in a while. Gymnastics, we don't have any gymnasts this year. We have gymnasts in the building. But when they wanna represent Massach, we usually do teams of one, which could be up to three. So we've got three student athletes on our team of one. We do have a policy, we do have a, a practice in place, a board practice in place that if we do have enough athletes who wanna create a gymnastics team, we can do that. But right now we pretty much have everything with the girls. Ice hockey is the co-op and boys volleyball that we've added. And girls golf, which we've added over the last, you know, ten to fifteen years.
Thank you.
Thanks. Can I ask a question about hockey?
Sure.
The additional hockey fee that's in the budget, is that something that could be passed on to the, the parents?
An additional fee?
Well, no, the, the, you know, the budget is going up for ice hockey. Um, what is it going up like to seventy-eight hundred dollars or eight thousand? Is that something that can be passed on? Usually we pass on the hockey fees to the families. They're, they're not, they don't get captured in the, um, in the cap because of how much expensive ice time is. So.
Are you saying for the, they went up because of the?
No, that's what the budget is going up. It's going up.
And that is for the, the fee for the, uh?
Ice time, right?
The, uh?
Or locker room or one of those?
The locker room rental.
Right. So I guess my question is, should that be passed on to the families of the program as opposed to the board taking that? Because ice hockey is usually a pass-on, like they, like I don't pay two fifty to play ice hockey. I pay whatever the cost of ice hockey is. It's not, it does, it's not covered by any cap or any per, you know, pay for play amount.
What we did with that one is very yes. Uh, but last year I agreed to, to try to take on that added cost. Because they were getting really hammered with the ice time and that the cost for the locker room went up significantly. And I said, I'll take that cost for your parents. Cause I know you're paying over thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two thousand for ice time. So they figured that would jump would be really tough for them. So that's why I took on that cost. To answer your question, in theory, yes. Something I don't, I, I refer not to.
What's the amount?
But.
What's the delta?
I, I forgot what the exact number is.
Women's ice hockey is eighty-three hundred, that's what we've calculated.
Right.
Their parents pay for hockey.
Kids pay for that.
She's in language.
How much does it cost to play hockey?
Uh, for girls, I think it is five hundred and sixty-five dollars per child.
What about boys?
I couldn't tell you. And, but I can tell you there's like, I, roughly thirty girls, so that's, uh, cause there's JVN varsity. So that's roughly, I guess, about seventeen hundred. But then there's also lots of fundraisers that doesn't take into account. So I think fundraisers alone come out to about close to seven thousand dollars that we fundraise for, to pay. So I'm saying that's probably roughly close to nine thousand dollars in total. Because, you know, there's, we do a fifty-fifty. We do the, uh, the, the girls against the faculty. There's, we did this snap raise. We do quite a bit of fundraising. So we do like seven grand of fundraising in addition.
So then you're saying, take the eighty-three and divide it by thirty?
No, no, no. I think that's the boys. That's the, the girls do not have a dedicated locker room.
Gotcha.
The girls get assigned any locker room that's available when they arrive there. The boys are the one that actually has their own dedicated locker room where they can put their stuff and gear and keep it there. The girls carry that stuff back and forth.
So what's the increase in the locker room cost for the year?
In terms of, can it be passed on?
No, no. What's the, what's the cost?
Oh, it's eighty, it's eighty-three. For us, the Board of Education is eighty-three hundred dollars.
What was it last year?
It tripled at.
Was there some, there was something last year?
I think it's seventeen.
Oh, yeah. We've been donating, we've been contributing to the.
I think seven fif- seventeen fifty.
Yeah, we've been contributing to paying that, uh, for the rental, for the, uh, rent the locker room for, for some time now.
So it's six, six thousand dollar difference or something?
It jumped. Yeah, the whole price of it.
Yeah, sixty-five hundred. I'm just asking different questions. I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, I view that as like a lever, but, you know, not something that we need to, I mean, it's peanuts compared to what we're looking at. So.
Right. But everything is, needs to be discussed and on a table.
Mm-hmm. For discussion.
I think that was all the questions. Sorry, my computer just went to sleep.
So, so.
I think that was all the questions we had with regard to athletics. Does anybody have any more? I think those are the only ones we had.
Jeff, you got the answer on the teams? Okay.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. I think the only other question that we had was what does cutting one of four clubs look like in savings? And Joe did address this in the answer back to us, but, um, the stipends are approximately six hundred and fifty dollars. So one club would be six hundred and fifty dollars. Obviously, for clubs, you're talking a little, almost twenty-five hundred dollars. Yeah.
And I hate to say it this way, but when you look at the amount of students it affects, it's, it's.
So those are the only ones that were submitted. Does anybody have other questions? So Joe, you have the list of the things that, that we just talked about tonight, especially with the buses?
And what I will do is I'll send this to you all tomorrow morning too, cause I make sure you guys have, that I'm getting all the questions that you guys need answered. So, yeah, I had to move the Jackie Hall into the tier one with Massach. I have that.
Okay. Was there anything else that anybody had in, with regard to, um, questions? Does everybody just wanna for the final time look over the, this, this document? To make sure that everything is fully answered that we had asked previously?
I, I think they did a good job answering all of our questions.
Yeah, they did. Very good.
I just don't wanna, I wanna make sure that we've covered every single solitary, um, you know, area. And that we haven't, you know, said, say go back afterwards and say, oh, oh, we forgot about X, Y, and Z. I mean, I think we did a, a, a very thorough line item.
I'm sure that everybody in the audience here has participated in this process. And dedicated, you know, time to putting this together, to answering the questions, to backing up the, the, the numbers. And obviously to attending these sessions and answering questions. So I think we all appreciate everybody's contribution to this.
I mean, just from the last meeting to this one, just the cuts in the six thousand series, I mean, they were all awesome. And getting, getting that data to me, we were working on it all the way up through this afternoon.
Donna?
Yes.
Uh, two things. Um, Joe, is there gonna be a way that we can get whatever the final, whatever the final one that had all of our questions on to the budget portion of the Monroe P S website?
Yep.
I think through the, through the chair, I think that would be important. So that if someone wanted to, we already put the line items out there. So.
Yep.
If someone wants to match these one-to-one. And the other request I had was through the chair, at our next meeting, could we go back to the budget freeze work, the budget freeze spreadsheet? I know we've passed on that because of all of our budget workshops, but we had like a November, a December column. And I think at our next regular meeting, that date and where we are, because I think the current fiscal year still has.
Challenges.
I know we're not gonna talk about it tonight, but just to put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
So just so you know, the, um, the, that's part of the work that we did today. We still look at, I had the, the whole administrative group in today. And we were updating that budget freeze, um, you know, looking at this fiscal today, quite honestly. And once again, um, these guys were awesome finding, you know, trying to find areas that we can continue to address this year's issue. There's two issues. There's this year's issue and then there's next year's issue. Tomorrow, um, we're gonna meet and start talking about, you know, what do we, how do we plan for, plan for next year?
Yeah, I think it's important we go back to that because there has been some adjustments to this year's with Darlene's update from last time. So, um, I take it you're taking that into account when you guys met today, so that we would have updates to that?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Anybody have any other questions regarding this or need anything further discussed or responded to? All right. And this adjustment sheet?
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm, uh.
We go back to that. Yeah.
Yeah. To the board, um, the adjustment sheet has been updated. And let me actually move out of the way.
The items invited us the special ed, so everybody feels that that needs to be added to this adjustment sheet to make it true it up correctly?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So then you can move those to then black, cause I know those were, those were outstanding, cause those are the first time we've gotten seen those.
Those are all included in the sum, right?
It's included in the sum.
Yeah.
Oh, God. Could you imagine?
Yeah, so then add those need to be adjusted too. So that puts us right now at a five point seven nine, which is a point zero nine over what the recommendation was. Because of the additions to, um, special ed tonight. Right?
Yep. Yep. I, I forget. I think before that.
Like before that, we would've been down.
Yeah, I think we're at like a five-five or something.
And everybody's good with where we are? We'll need this email, well, good with what this is at this point?
Good.
Are we gonna?
We'll see. In terms of back.
Well, what I mean is with everything that's been added in, in there. I'm not saying, oh, is everybody happy with the final number. I'm just saying, everybody's good with what we have.
What's been done.
What's been done. That's what I'm trying to get to.
As we were going through this whole book, I, I made notes on things that we were gonna go, possibly go back to.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
So as far as, you know, we brought up conferences, but I, I wrote down page one oh nine. But is that what we're, based on what we found out in the last couple of days? Joe, is that where we're comfortable at? Or are we gonna hit that a little more? Let me look at one oh nine.
That's what I was trying to bring up earlier. I thought we talked about doing some adjustments there. Thank you. You said one oh nine, David?
Yeah, it was fifty-five thousand, six fifty, total conferences, course registrations.
Right. That's what I thought we were looking.
When we had an actual of thirty thousand last year.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's.
So nothing's been taken out for this, right?
I don't, I, I think ten thousand was taken out of the, the line above the, the top, the top line there. On, on page one oh nine, we took ten thousand out of there. Yeah.
Okay.
And then, like I said, I, I think we were looking at kind of creating some equity, equity with the, um, with the, uh, with all the schools, putting like thirty-five dollars a person. So it's, it's only a savings about, you know, I had calculated. And I, I don't think it's in yet, but it's only a savings of about thirty-five hundred bucks. But if I looked at every school, um, you know, I think, I think it was in, in, I think the, just the schools, it was about thirteen thousand dollars. And if I made them off thirty-five dollars apiece, it'd be about ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so.
So I'll get that in.
So are we comfortable with just a ten thousand dollar cut there? Or do we need to cut that? Is it realistic to cut any more out of that?
Are we trending towards a fifty-seven thousand for this year, Linda?
We're definitely not because we're on a freeze. So no one's going anywhere. And that's, it's a tricky one. I mean, this is. I mean, listen, ultimately, if that's where we gotta go, you know, if we gotta, I mean.
Right.
Anything if you open but it's.
It was twenty-six, you, you cut ten. Is that how I'm reading it?
No, it was fifty-five and we cut ten.
And you cut ten, so it's forty-five. So the question is, can you cut more?
Right.
Because twenty nineteen actual was thirty thousand. So that's up fifteen thousand with a, with a ten cut. So couldn't.
Linda, can you just remind me what it was in twenty eighteen and twenty seventeen?
For conferences?
Yeah, and just in total.
Actually, I was just looking up, uh, year to date, so.
Oh, so go ahead. If you wanna give us year to date, that's fine too.
So on object seven five three 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 zero, we have an actual so far of forty-three eighty-one encumbrances of eighty-five thirty-four. So that's a thirteen grand.
Okay.
But we've also been using grants to pay for professional development this year, as well as the admin contracted amount. We've been using our admin funds to pay for staff to attend workshops rather than trying to hit these lines.
Yeah.
Okay.
And your eighteen actual was twenty-three thousand, six thirty-three.
Twenty-three thousand, six thirty-three for twenty eighteen?
Yeah.
And would you have seventeen too? Sorry.
I don't, cause it doesn't consolidate that far. I have, I'll have history on each line, but I don't have a total.
Right. So I think if. What?
Twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen.
Free here.
Yes.
Right, but.
It might be what it is. And, you know, if we, if we wanna do.
I mean, I'm not, I don't know if anybody's suggesting like, oh, we'll only go to thirteen thousand, I think. Where everybody's saying if we even just maybe take, I don't wanna speak for anybody else, but I think they're saying if, even if we just go to the thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Which is another fifteen. I mean, that's still more than what we spent in twenty eighteen. It's in line with twenty nineteen.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Is everybody good with taking another fifteen there?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not, but I'll agree.
Joey, can you do some free conferences?
What was it, fifteen hundred?
Fifteen thousand.
Thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
So, so again, this is the kind of work that we've been doing. And I think we'll do is go back to, to everybody.
Part of the reason why your Vex is as strong as it is, and your Legos are as strong as it is, and your STEM is as strong as it is, is because of these. And I know Sheila works very, very hard, but I don't wanna cut it too much. You have to understand for a classroom teacher, this is the only way that he or she grows. This is it. You wanna go to a state conference, a national conference? It's not that you wanna go. You're, you're leaving your families and you're in eight-hour workshops, ten-hour workshop, but you're doing it for the kids.
But you're leaving your family.
Yeah, I got you there, Kevin Lane. My point is, I just, I, I don't know. I, I'd be comfortable with, with another ten, but I'm one, I'm one voice. I mean, if you guys wanna go to fifteen, it's fine. I understand.
All right. What does everybody wanna do? Fifteen or ten? What?
I, I say fifteen. Cut it to thirty, make it even thirty thousand.
Okay.
Even, so I'm gonna bring that bottom line to thirty thousand.
Grants. There's grants as well.
I think we're gonna, I think we're just at a point where we're gonna have to try to tap into as much of those grants and type of stuff. And I know that's extra work for our staff to try to go out and find them, but, you know, I'll go back to, I'd rather have a teacher in front of children.
Agreed. I agree.
Than, you know, at least that's me. I'm just talking myself.
No, I, I, I agree.
All right. Okay, I'm gonna go back to.
Can we, can we, can we get this live and see what some of these are? Or would, or Linda, you have that, right?
Have what, they, I can tell you what's this current year.
No, no, what you're saying is, can you update this live?
No, as we go through a couple of things.
I'm, I don't have access to that, no.
It's not, it's Excel.
Uh, it's Excel, yeah, I don't, I just have, you know, I don't have Excel on here.
Okay, do you have Excel on there, I know?
Yeah, that, I mean, this is it right here, um.
Can you just up?
I can do it, I'm just afraid to, uh, just afraid that.
Come on, Jerry.
I'm gonna wipe it out.
No, 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 cause this was just a, this was just an email, so I'm not, I'm not in the case, uh.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Uh-oh, see, Joe messed it up now, oh no, it's bad.
The projector is twelve years old, what are you gonna do?
Well, I have to know what the light bulb cost in that, sir?
Oh, yeah, you were on vacation when we had that discussion, so.
Oh, good, good, I'm happy for that. You guys really were fighting about light bulbs and smart boards, I love you guys.
We did not fight, we just got a discussion on it.
They're expensive, guys, that's why.
No, light bulbs didn't come up.
Yeah, no, but it wasn't a fight, is what I'm saying, it was a discussion.
No, it wasn't a fight, no, it was a discussion.
See, I, I know how much it.
Your parents always tell you.
You can be great with that.
Oh, can you just, uh, just copy the formula down, it's not gonna, and I'm gonna need to help.
You'll get it, you'll get it, Kevin Lane, come on.
Go ahead, Donna.
Maria's doing it.
Show us that expertise, go for it.
No, we'll, we'll make changes.
Like, I think they're doing some updates.
Yeah. Is that the actual line or is that the cut?
I think that they're just updating the conferences as opposed to being in two different places.
That's the cut.
Okay, now delete the line that you just added, Joe. Alright, well, I'm gonna go back to my page thirty-six, which is the courier. And we, I'm sorry, can we get rid of this courier, please? I understand it's only twelve thousand dollars, but.
Can we start off with that, it's only now?
Eleven thousand, sorry, eleven thousand dollars.
Can we start off with the eleven thousand? Now, I want you to take the amount of employees that they affect and divide it in the eleven thousand and tell me how much it's worth. To me, it's, the eleven thousand is worth every penny, but I was in the classroom affected by it.
By the courier?
I mean, but what we did in that, what we did forty-seven years ago, there's been a lot of advancements.
I understand.
Cause we have email now. We have scanning, electronic signature.
Mr. Cobb's a point of administrative, can we DocuSign every single thing that we sent to the state? I can't. Carl Perkins grants, I cannot DocuSign.
Right, but I mean, there's definitely people moving around the district on, on Ds.
So I'm gonna turn to Mr. Ceccholini and say, Mr. Ceccholini, I just signed your Carl Perkins, can you run that up to central office? He's gonna say, sure, I'll do that now.
No, you scan it, you email it, somebody prints it out, signs it, scans it, sends it back.
Ah, so even though they want it in blue, so you can't see, you see, you guys, I'm gonna educate you guys. They don't want the signature in black, they, the state, it's gotta be in blue.
Right, do you have a color, do you have a color scanner?
Wet ink, yeah.
Do you know why?
Wait, go ahead, Darlene.
Can't do that with special ed.
Yeah, they can't be done.
Has to be the actual.
Has to be the actual.
Yeah, it's gotta be stamped, too.
Same with my warrants.
Oh, here's.
Some of the news happenings in the last few years, um, if documents get mailed to the wrong person, it's a big issue.
It's, it's a gigantic issue, guys, the amount of money.
I understand, but I mean, we're, we're doing this eleven thousand dollars of driving around the district stuff, that, I mean, quite honestly, we're in twenty twenty, you know, we should be able to do this more on, you know, in the town, the only thing the town gets, uses it for is Ron getting the warrants. That's it, I checked with Ken.
Just so, just so you know, I mean, this was the, um, when this came up, um, you know, I, I think all the administrators kinda put together, what do we use the courier for? So they go between central office, town hall, senior center, police department, bus company, Edith Wheeler, you know all that already.
Right.
These, these are the documents that require an original signature, so, uh, teaching certificates, coaching certificates, tax forms, uh, free reduced lunch applications, personnel documents, um, that require hard copy.
And we're, we're, we're co-funding this with the town?
No.
No.
But the town is not really using it, the police department doesn't use it. The only time Edith Wheeler uses it, um, is if somebody accidentally drops a schoolbook off at the library to as a return. Um, you know, the senior center's not using it, town hall is not using it except for the warrants. That's what, that's what I was told.
I think what we're talking about is efficiencies, with this, rather than.
Right. Right.
Yeah, yeah, so how, how could we do it better and smarter, or, or?
Right.
As needed, or, or stipend instead of a, a part-time position?
Right, that's running every single day of the week, because maybe there's stuff on one day, but on another day, there could be nothing running. Because I'm, I'm gonna go back to, can you just go up a little? I, I don't think that every single day of the week, there is, you know, a teaching certificate documents going around.
What if we cut it just slightly to say we did something? To take a couple thousand dollars out, I, I don't know.
Maybe, the other thing is, if you're gonna do it, you have to, like I said, if we do a stipend, or you do mileage or something for.
But you're gonna have to, see, I was just gonna bring that up to my friends on the board, cut it, but you're gonna pay these administrators for miles. So I'll tell you what, if I'm a principal and I'm running that stuff up there, you're paying me for miles.
Yeah, but the principals aren't putting in for their travel now.
I understand, my point is, somebody should.
Becky said she's gonna start.
That's my point.
So maybe I just argue against myself, now they're gonna put it in.
So somebody would need, at the current reimbursement rate, which for twenty twenty is point five seven five.
Right, yeah.
Down a, a little bit.
Tens or whatever.
Yeah, from last year. You would need somebody to drive nineteen thousand, two hundred and ten miles to get to eleven thousand, forty-six dollars.
That's awesome, now if you multiply that by the, by the three hundred and sixty-five days, cause they, are they twelve-month employees?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
So do it by what, two hundred days, I don't know how many days there are, take out weekends.
Right, so I mean, that's a, you know, that's a lot of mileage, so even if you're paying mileage, you're nowhere coming up to eleven grand.
Darlene, what would the impact be on special ed, though?
Well, like I said, we, I'm, I'm not quite sure how we're gonna get those documents, and we also have a timeline. There are very strict timelines, where we have, we do, they're to get, um, documents out within five days, um, to parents and sometimes.
Well, are they being couriered to, couriered to the parents, or they're being mailed to the parents?
Well, they're being mailed to the parents, but we have, but we have five schools that need to get the documents, um.
To where?
Get them out, but they, then we have to get, we have to get documents to central office, um, it's, you know, it's, the timeline, the five-day timeline probably is.
Do I have Google Drive? I mean, do we have SharePoint, do we have? No, no, you, sorry, you can't save a file to a server within the, the school district. You can't save a special ed file to a server within the school.
No, because sometimes they, they need a wet signature.
Yes, you can't, you, you guys are forgetting, I guess you all forget how to sign, you still have to sign legally.
But special ed is the biggest use of this, maybe there's a way for everything else and still cut the cost, right?
But even if somebody is driving it, let's say, and you're paying them a mileage reimbursement at fifty-seven and a half cents, you're still saving money than paying eleven thousand.
But who do they get from their office to go to the five, that's where I, I'm just trying to, look, I know we're wasting a lot of time over there.
But I mean, at the end of the day, somebody just, as part of their responsibility, doesn't get a, 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 a mileage reimbursement for doing that, I mean.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you guys.
I think we should be able to find efficiencies here, I hate to beat on this thing, cause it isn't a lot, but I mean, I, I understand, and, you know, forty-seven years ago, maybe that needed to be done, but, I mean, there's gotta be some efficiencies in some of the stuff that we're doing.
As long as it's on record that a year from now, as you're all going, oh my gosh, we should've never done, I could smile and go, I got you. So cut it, I'm gonna vote no, but cut it.
But I, I just wanna reiterate what Darlene said, if those documents in special ed are not out within five days, you got a serious problem.
You got a big issue.
But if you have, just like, if you have that document, I mean, how, is there documents every single day that come up?
We have four hundred special ed kids.
Every PPT.
And the other thing is, if you get, if you get a request for documents, you have a timeline there, where you have to get, get those documents out. So, and, and those are requests for records, so you have to have, from the school, you have to have a file, you have to have the nurses' file from the school. But it all has to come to, um, central office, so we can check it to redact it before we send it out, so, and you, and you have, um, ten days to do that, so.
But how is it redacted?
Somebody has to sit.
With a black marker.
Oh, so we can.
I mean, guys, I, I just sold two of my mom's houses and I couldn't DocuSign, I had to drive to New Haven to sign the things. There are certain things you cannot DocuSign, one is your signature.
I DocuSign quite a bit of stuff.
It's just not gonna work.
I don't know, because I'm just thinking like, okay, well, you know, in, at work, you know, when I have to upload, you know, stuff to global search, which is our, you know, HR system, and I have to redact things, my, my, my little computer system, I hit redact and I highlight the whole block area and it goes bye-bye.
It goes along.
Well, it doesn't go bye-bye, but it covers it, you know what I'm saying?
I think there's wa- there's ways to file share today that we didn't have in the past. What I would ask, what I would ask is for Darlene to come back to us and tell us specifically which documents require a wet signature as opposed to a signature, even if it's, i- if it shows up in blue on the, on the, the copied version.
I got you.
Which ones, which ones do you absolutely require a wet signature for?
That's a good point.
Okay.
Why don't we move this to the list, like with the buses?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
That we need to look at later on.
Maybe there's just efficiencies in some areas with special ed needs to stay with.
Right, correct.
So there'd be some savings, but not completely eliminated.
The, the task has to get done, is how do we do it better?
Right, exactly, so that's gonna need more.
Yeah.
Right, I think that needs to be added to that same list.
Agreed.
We were looking at, on page one twenty-five, we were looking at equipment repairs, vehicles, system-wide. It was up six thousand, I know we have to maintain our vehicles, it's very important, but, um.
One twenty-five, David.
We were talking about maintaining vehicles that were gonna be, being replaced, I think, if, if we're.
Oh, yeah, Ron's here now. Ron.
Ron's looks nervous.
Um, is the board, the, the board's vehicles, doesn't the town have a rolling stock account? For vehicles on a replacement cycle?
Vehicle replacement plan that's including capital plan.
So.
Last couple of years, we've been bonding.
Is the, does the vehicle replacement plan for the town include the board vehicles?
To my knowledge, no, there hasn't, yeah.
There, there's several.
I thought it was part of our capital, capital, five-year capital plan.
Yeah, so the board's capital plan will be coming with the budget, usually does, right?
Yep.
So, um, if there are vehicles in it, the conversation can be had to, uh, include a vehicle replacement.
So every year, when the board submits their capital plan, the board's vehicles are, are one by one added to the town's vehicle replacement plan as the other.
They haven't been in the past, they could use. I thought that they were.
Yeah.
I thought that we had submitted a number of years back, a, a five-year, a three, at least a three-year plan that had vehicles in addition to the other capital projects, like roof replacements and whatnot, that we needed to do over that period of time. I thought vehicles were on.
I know they won't bond it for us to, uh.
Yeah, we didn't bond, bond page two oh eight of the, you don't have a computer in front of you, but.
I don't.
What?
I don't.
Okay, page two oh eight of this year's approved budget, it's on the website, listed board of education related stuff in a capital plan, and I think the page was two oh eight. But I don't know what that, that's, I mean, we're actually gonna bond for, for.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna spend all.
So, so to answer your question, it could be, it could be added.
Yeah, I, and I'm not, I, that's just my, my one personal, I don't wanna spend half an hour on looking stuff up in the whole capital plan, but I think that the vehicle, the vehicles, my personal opinion, is that I think the board vehicles and the town vehicle replacement plan should somehow come together through the budget process.
Agreed. Do we have, do, we do have a vehicle in here, right, or no, we don't?
We don't, we have on the five-year that Bill put together, the equipment replacement, we don't have a vehicle next year. We have, um, a walk behind floor machine for Masick and a walk behind floor machine for Fawn Hollow.
But that's on the, that's in the op plan.
That's, that's on.
The capital plan, yeah.
Capital.
No, no, that's in the.
Not in here.
It's not here, what's this here? The walk, the, uh, scrubbers and everything on page one twenty-five.
This is, this is, this is repairs and maintenances, repairs and maintenance.
So that's repairs and maintenance to the existing equipment, the one that's in the op plan?
Repairs to rider and walk behind.
Preventive ma- maintenance.
And then those are new, new purchases?
Right, so we have the facilities capital plan, which is, you know, includes for next year, the, um, front driveway reconfiguration and drainage at Fawn Hollow is the only thing we have for next year. Then on the equipment one, we have the two walk behind machines, that total twenty-three thousand, and then we have the, the technology one, um, that's one fifty-two that, um, Paul went through last meeting, um, and, and went through that whole presentation.
So those are two distinct items, though, right? You need to buy new and you need to budget for repair of other ones.
Yep.
Okay, alright, just making sure.
And the point I'm making about the cars is, you know, the detail in the line items is very helpful, that it has the years of the vehicles, because when you get a car that's two thousand and five, that's fourteen years old, you get to a point where you're like, you're basically buying a new car, but piece by piece, right? Cause it behooves you from putting that into retirement and getting on a replacement plan, so somehow, it looks like we average buying a new vehicle every three to four years, and I, but I don't think that's planned, I think every three or four years, we're just like, oh, it's time. And so I think that personally, the, the, the walk, the walk behinds and all of that stuff that's specific to the board of ed, I could see being kept as a board of ed capital budget that's submitted with our budget to the town, but I just feel like vehicles is something that is more uniform across the two entities, and so it could be a discussion between, like, when we get to the, the council and the board of finance, like the vehicle plan. For, I, I don't know, I, when I was on the council, I thought we created a rolling stock account that had board of ed vehicle replacement as part of the cycle.
So there was, um, there was an inter, there was an internal fin, we were appropriating fund for, for equipment replacement, which was, uh, I think, I think the, um, the property would have, uh, board of ed and town have purchased through there. So there, there were some vehicles, it wasn't really a, a, a rolling replacement plan, though.
Yeah. Anyway, thanks to Bill, last meeting, and Jerry, you're gonna love this, this is that, all you, all the equipment we have in the year is that Bill has.
I didn't get one, sorry.
You're on vacation.
Well, I have, yeah. But anyway, Bill provided this, so we have, uh, two thousand and five Ford, two of them, two, two, two thousand and five Ford, uh, F three fifties, a two thousand and nine GMC Sierra, thirty-five hundred, um, two, two thousand and twelve Ford F three fifties, two, two thousand and sixteen Ford F one, five, sorry, five fifties, and a Ford, a two thousand and nineteen Ford F three fifty Super Duty. And I will make a copy.
How many of those plow?
I, I, that's a good question, I have no idea.
They all plow, except for the old, the D O nine, so if any of you plow, you'll know what it costs to maintain those, right?
A lot.
So if we go to a private contract, you know what that would cost, right? I just thought I'd ask.
We're agreeing with you.
Okay.
Yeah, nobody's. Yeah.
The reason why the two thousand and nine doesn't plow is it has a cracked frame.
Oh, did that get cracked on the job?
Plowed.
Thank you. So to answer your question, I think the reason why they didn't go on Chairman Lane, I'm sorry, is because you're talking vehicle, I'm not trying to be all kinds of gr- we're, we're talking a roving machine, you're talking car, we're talking trucks that are going for fifty-five thousand, not cars that are going for twenty thousand.
No, that's fine, I, that's fine, but I think that, you know, I'm just trying to get it to a place where it's more stable.
I agree with you, I don't know why either, I do know, I think Ron is right, though, I do know in the past, they have.
Put it on a replacement plan.
Right, well, and that's what Bill.
But there's a reason why, and I can't remember, Ron, there is a reason why we want to join it, and it's just, I can't remember right now.
I mean, you, Bill did put on the replaced two thousand and five F three fifty and twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
It's an oh five?
And Jerry, I'll make you a copy of this, cause I know you wanted all this different items with the dates and everything.
I did.
So I will get you a copy of this. See what happens when you miss out on a meeting?
I know. I feel bad.
Oh, well, not just one meeting. Actually, I'm happy now that I'm far away.
See, what did I tell you? There's safety sitting there when you're across the table from Jerry, so he can't reach you.
So were, were you looking to do a cut in this line item? I mean.
I, I was just wondering. Thanks, Jerry. For reeling us back in. I just had made a note that we would go, possibly go back to this, but it, we're only looking at five or six thousand dollars with vehicles that old. I, at this point, I'd say leave it.
Yeah, cause I'm looking to triple it, so I think we should leave it.
To go back to it was because we were talking, I, I remember the discussion. It was about maintenance versus.
New vehicle.
Yeah, like when, when is the new vehicle in plan for, and if it's happening, then why are we spending a lot of money on ma- that was the, that was.
Yeah, that was the discussion.
And the other thing was on page one twenty-seven, but I think Paul answered all of those questions in his presentation about the uh, the equipment and the repairs, AV system-wide, the fifty-five thousand.
Yeah.
He talked to that.
Yes, he did.
So how much is a light bulb?
A lot.
Five hundred.
That, I knew it. Pegged out.
And it's really not the screens, it's the projector.
Oh, it's a projector, oh yeah.
We got, so I guess, Bill, do we need to add on this, um, the equipment replacement? Do you think we need to add any vehicles for next year?
Thank you.
Update this?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. So can you update that? Cause we'll need to submit this on, um, for Thursday.
That's capital?
It's a five-year look.
The capital.
Yeah, the capital.
It's a capital.
The equipment replacement. So if you can update that for, with, with vehicles? So that that goes to the town, so it can be incorporated into there? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I had a, I had a follow-up on, uh, to circle back to as well, as it tends to vehicles. Um, it was the gasoline on page two oh eight. We had actuals of nine thousand, the budgeting twenty thousand. When, do you have an update, like? Yeah. For actuals on that? Two oh eight, yep. It's for total gasoline.
It went over from nine to fifteen?
So it's gasoline, trucks, so far this year, twenty-four sixty-six. Last year's actual, nine thousand three ninety-six. Eighteen's was thirteen nine ninety-two.
Wait a second, tw- twenty-four, two thousand four hundred?
Yeah.
Anything?
Two thousand four hundred.
So far this year?
So far this year.
Anything encumbered?
Uh, nothing's encumbered right now.
Okay. And this is for just regular gas, right?
This is the ones that get billed through the town, so that's why it's not an encumbrance. It comes through the elimination account. So, you know, it's, it's billed through the Town Hall, um, elimination account.
Six.
So we just journal it to this account, but, I mean, I could look at history. Um, further back, seven, back in two thousand and seventeen, we had fourteen thousand. Looks like it's gone down over the years. It was twenty-one, eighteen.
Twenty-four hundred so far through six months of the year. Let's dou- double that. And that's it.
Ron, do you know when these, these get billed?
So.
It's monthly, every, every, yeah, every month in the elimination account, there's uh two that hit every month. There probably is, yeah, I probably haven't journalled yet. I probably haven't hit this month's journal, cause I've been too busy with budget, so um.
The other thing is you probably get two basis months ahead of you.
I think so, Joe.
Right. Yeah, is there a way you can tell what it usually happens in July and, I mean, July, sorry, January, February, which will be the big months? Like, can you tell?
It's probably the average.
Well, it's pretty, yeah, it depends on how much snow you get.
It does, the uh, the system actually does generate a report.
Okay.
I mean, we have, we have bonds that you, yeah, so. I could check with, uh, just a lackey, see if he can pull it up.
But I mean, I think the fifteen is pretty reasonable to where we were in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. Cause if it's fifteen thousand, you were talking seventeen, it's fourteen thousand. Eighteen, it's like fourteen thousand. That's.
We are fifteen in that line, just so you know, and for the new twenty-twenty-one.
Right, right, right. That's what I'm saying. So what I'm saying is that in sev- in seventeen, we're at fourteen thousand total. In eighteen, we're at fourteen thousand total. So the fifteen thousand to fifty is, is reasonable to where we've been running in the past.
Yes.
That's all I was trying to say.
Agreed.
All right. Anything else? Did Dave disappear? I know he had some notes. I just wanna make sure he was. He was, didn't have any.
I don't know, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
I don't know. I don't know. I just wanna make sure he didn't have anything else. On his notes. Oh. Oh, he's there?
No, a question over here.
Oh, question some.
Mr. Jironsko.
Oh, sorry, Bill.
Another thought, um, Ron and I were just talking about is all the equipment up at High School that we know that, you know, we have several large mowers up there, hand mowers, um, weed trimmers for that. They're all learned by gas.
Yeah.
And that we're hitting spring.
Yeah. No, I think, I think we leave the, I think we leave it alone. It's reasonable to what we've been running for the past number of years, so I wouldn't touch that. Anybody have anything else? That we did not cover? I wanna make sure we've thoroughly gone through um everything. And Joe, you have all the notes that we came up with tonight.
I have all the notes here from tonight.
And this was an effort to.
I will send them to you.
To actually, you know, minimize the note, the questions today by submitting in advance, but it just seems that we just even came up with more that we need answered. All right. Do we wanna take just a quick recess? Um, and then, um, so we can get Dave back before we move on to item number ten, which is the approval of this budget?
I move to recess, subject to the call of the Chair.
Thank you. Second, I'll take Jeff. All in favor of just a quick recess? So let's take about five, ten minutes.
Why don't we send a freshman member out to look, look for him?
I guess we will move on then to item ten, which is new business, which is approval of the twenty-twenty, twenty-one Board of Education budget. Um, I guess we need to come to a number first before we can actually say, um, what is the present, presented number?
Don, if I may, I think we need to have some discussion on it.
Okay.
Certainly, um, I'm not happy with a five-point-seven-eight. Um, I cannot vote for a five-point-seven-eight. I think unfortunately, we have been, our methodology has been budgeting to referendum instead of budgeting to needs, but we also have a financial responsibility as taxpayers and as representative, representatives of our taxpayers to keep the budget um a- as reasonable as possible. There's no, there's no wants in this budget. I, I understand we're barely covering needs, and I understand that a lot of mistakes have been made in the past, and we're suffering from that currently. Um, again, this is, this is no fluff to a budget. Um, we need to continue to work past tonight. Whatever we agree on and pass tonight, I feel like we're running, we have run out of time, even with the extra two weeks, thanks to Nick, and with the extra meetings we've all put in, I, I don't feel ready to, to have a vote tonight, but we have to because we have a deadline. So the work must continue past tonight. I think we need to pass whatever it is that we're gonna pass, so that it can move through the referendum process, the budgeting process, but we need to continue every single day to find efficiencies, and I know a lot is, uh, is continuing, and we need to communicate um to the residents on why this budget is the price tag that it is, because it is certainly high. Um, so I'll be the brave one, and I'm gonna recommend that this board cut um five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand from this budget, with the understanding that we will all work towards efficiencies, and hopefully those efficiencies will make up for that half a million. The last thing I want is staff layoffs. The last thing. We need to find efficiencies, and I think if we drive towards that goal, we should be okay.
I'll second that motion.
Wait, can I please come to a actual number? So you're.
Um, I can give you that number.
Because it gets.
No?
Well, we added something on here tonight, so.
Okay, go ahead. Why don't we continue the discussion while Joe gets that?
Right. Cause we need to know what an exact number.
From all of us, on this.
Trying to make sure I didn't mess this up.
So I'll, I'll second the motion, but my, my comment on this is that we've, we've done a lot of diligence on this, this budget, this cycle than, more so than, than I think any other cycle in the past. There's, with, with, uh, with, with good reason, right? There, we, we didn't start in a good place. Uh, we're not in a good place this fiscal year, uh, and we didn't start in a good place for next, next fiscal year. So I think that we've, we've identified some opportunities just through the course of the review of the line items and finding redundancies or stuff that was never spent before, um, uh, but was still being budgeted. So I think that we've, we've uncovered a lot, and I agree with Dave, there's still more to do. I think that uh there are levers that have been identified, that we are looking at, uh, that we will continue to vet. Um, I think that as a district, we need to not just think in terms of X's and O's on the paper. I think that what we need to do is start to think about getting ourselves uh right-sized and um doing business differently going forward. Um, what are things that we're doing today that we should have, you know, that we should, that we should be doing more efficiently, more effectively, um, and not just relying on the way things have been done before. I think, uh, I said it before, that, that thing about the courier, even though it may be necessary for special ed, is a microcosm of, of what we have before us, right? There are other things there. There are other levers that we can pull. Uh, I'm confident in that. So, um, I think that, that, um, this is, what Dave's proposal is, is um a responsible way to, to review this and, and to work together collectively to continue to drive efficiencies in the budget.
Nick?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I have a few comments on this budget. Um, the first thing I wanna do is thank the Chair and really all the board members, and I think it is worth noting what a bipartisan process this was, and I, I think that needs to be pointed out. Um, I went through four budgets on the town side, and uh, this was, save for the content, a breath of fresh air for the process. Whenever I had any question, I could text or call the Chair, and I got an answer truthfully, completely, and almost immediately, and so thank you for that. Um, I think that every budget tells a story. And I think the story of this budget is important to put into context. Um, one of our big drivers in this budget is sped costs, and it's no one's fault. It's what it is. Um, we have to educate all of Monroe students equitably. Um, we also had the teacher's contract go up during all of this. Um, I think our teachers need to be compensated equitably as well. Uh, we have transportation contractual increases, insurance premiums that we were making up for that are now gonna be stabilized going forward because we're in a new plan. Um, I think the bottom line is that this board is doing its best to fix what has happened in the past, but this is gonna be a multi-year process. Um, and at the end of the day, we are here to educate Monroe students as best as we can. I think every budget also has a story behind the numbers. Um, if you go back, and we have the history in our original budget books that we got, in fiscal years twenty-twelve and twenty-thirteen, we had zero percent increases, and that has a story to it, right? Were those zeros justified? Maybe. We were clawing our way out of the recession, and we had declining enrollment. Uh, there wasn't a need to fill retirements because students were, the student population was decreasing, but that's not the case anymore. As a matter of fact, over the next four to five years, elementary school enrollments are projected to tick up, so much so that according to our elementary school principals, in the coming years, we might have to look at adding classrooms and teachers, because people wanna come to Monroe um for our school district. We had very small increases after that twenty-thirteen year. Um, but my question is, is why were our increases so low when our enrollment started to stabilize? I think that this board was given a number to work backwards from over the last several years, and I think that's a big problem. And when the Board of Finance dictates a number to the Board of Education, and the Board of Ed asks for a larger increase the next year, as you go forward, the money that you lose in that first year, it's compounded year over year. So if the board asks for a three and it gets cut to a two, and the next year the board asks for a three and it gets cut to a two, that next year's not really a decrease of one, it's a decrease of two, cause you're still absorbing that cut from the year before. After you do that over several years, where your enrollment is stabilizing and maybe now ticking up, you're so far behind the eight ball, six or seven years out, which is where we are today, right? The error compounds upon itself, right? Um, we saw the three hundred thousand dollar plug number that was put into the board budget last year. That was to get us in at one point nine seven. That was to get us in right at that two percent, because a number was given to the board, right? I appreciate the board this year not doing that. We are budgeting to what we need. Um, so what happens next? Okay? Um, the board is saying that this is what we need. I know that five-seven-nine is a high number, but we spent, I think it's about, depending on when we adjourn tonight, seventeen or eighteen hours going through this budget line by line, and we're saying this is what we need. I wanna be absolutely clear from my perspective, if the first selectmen or the board, and/or the Board of Finance make a wholesale cut to this budget before it goes out to the first referendum, in my personal opinion, they own that cut. We are saying this is what we need to fund this board. We've seen the Board of Finance Chair write letters. There were things said in the letter, do what you need to do. I don't agree with that, because if you look at what the Board of Finance Chair said in public to get to a number, what is that number? That number is millions of dollars. I agree with David. I think staff should be the last thing that we cut, but we are trying to do the right thing now this year, and it seems like we're still getting penalized. Um. I want us to have the courage, the political courage, to send town what we need, what we think we need to keep our award-winning school district what it is, and we are trying to do the right thing. As this goes forward, the first selectmen, the Board of Finance, we, we can't think about our reelections, you know? That always concerned me about these local offices, when people said, oh, that's not gonna be good for my reelection. But this isn't the Congress. This is the Monroe Board of Education. We can't think about the number we're gonna put on a shiny mailer in twenty-twenty-one and think that far down the road. It is hard to vote ourselves a tax increase. As a new homeowner, this vote is, is hurting me more than maybe some of you, but we are doing it for the future of our children. I said at the town council meeting about the teacher's contract. Today's students are tomorrow's leaders, and young families are moving here for our school system, right? So we need to do what we need to do to get there. Um, I'm not gonna be supporting the cut tonight. I also, very openly and, and very frank discussion, I don't like that we're not talking about where it would come from. I understand we're on a deadline. I would be more comfortable, and I'll be supporting a budget that votes out what we need, what we went over line by line for seventeen hours, and from now until that workshop night with the Board of Finance, we continue to find efficiencies and say, Board of Finance, we found all this. We're okay with this cut, and if you wanna cut above that, then you can do that. But I really want to give this a shot. I want to knock on doors for this budget. I feel that we deserve at least the first referendum to sell the story of this budget and tell the people, this is what we need to educate your children with our school system and the great teachers that we, and the administrators that we can retain. and the great teachers that we, and the administrators that we can retain and do so well by you. I really want that shot. Um, and I also just want to thank Linda and Maria and the super for their, we did seventeen hours, they did seventeen hundred, and I think they should be pointed out for that as well. But, um, I can't support the cut for all those reasons, and, uh, thank you for the time.
No problem, thank you. Anybody else?
I cannot support the cut either. And Nick, thank you for sharing everything.
Well, I had it written down, so.
Did you write that during the whole break?
No, I had it written, but the last hour I had to adjust on the fly, so.
He was the pastor in front of the mayor of practice.
Well, at least we can still joke. Anybody else? Alan?
Yeah, my, my concerns with the cut are, um, you know, we already have class sizes that are too high. We have, uh, more and more new families moving into the town, our enrollment's going up, and when class sizes are too high, I mean, we already noted that, um, we have rising special ed costs, but if you put more kids in a classroom, more kids are going to fall behind, and that could necessitate more special education services. So I'm concerned about that, I'm concerned about, um, supplies that the principals need. In particular, some of the, um, microscopes and that sort of thing that, um, our high school principal said he needed. And, um, you know, it, it's too many freezes, uh, too many things, cans getting kicked down the road too often. Um, and rising special ed costs, we can't control that, it, it's happening everywhere. We see, um, increases in special ed members all over the state. And, um, that's why I just have a hard time cutting, you know, what, I mean, we spent how many hours going through this line by line? Um, I, I just, at this time, I just can't support it, and, um, so I'll be voting, uh, no to the cut.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think.
I guess, I guess I'll go. Um, there's, there's different points that I agree with that I've heard from, from all of my fellow board members so far, and I want to say, I want to say thank you to everybody. It has definitely been a group effort, and a lot of time away from your families and kids, and, you know, to our, to our admin and staff and the fellow board members who have spent countless hours on this budget, and this year in particular, and the difficulties that we've had. Um, I grew up here, like a lot of other people, I think, in this room, and, uh, chose to raise my family here for a reason, because it really is a special place. And the teachers and the caring professionals and the community of people and the spirit of this town is really important to me, and that's why I'm here. Um, so I think that the enrollment is going down in many other towns and many other districts, and I think other people do recognize that there's something special here in Monroe, and that's why our enrollment is more unique in that it's, in that it is going up. Um, we've had, we're going through tough times this year, I think that Joe Cobbs has said that, and, and it's true, and we will get through it. Um, I feel like between a rock and a hard place, like the, tonight, that there's just, you know, we can't, we have, we're, we're charged with the task of, of putting forth a budget that represents the best needs for the children of our district and that the taxpayers can afford. And it's, it's, uh, it's not easy, it's, it's not easy at all. Um, our, our district is not alone with these issues, with Board of Ed, uh, budget issues. Uh, I think we're one of five states that the burden of proof is on the district, and, um, and I think changes need to be made at a state level with the unfunded mandates that, that come our way. I think, I think that there's a bigger, a bigger issue in the state that's, that's driving a lot of districts like, like us to the point where we're at right now. And, um, more work, more work needs to be done, but again, uh, we're, we have a deadline tonight, and we have a budget that we have to pass, and, um, and we have more work to do, we've been doing a lot of work, and we have more work to do. And that's where I am.
Anybody else?
No, but I have that one already.
Oh, okay. Um, so I was going to say first, thank you for everybody, everybody, you know, I, I always find that everybody's point of view is very important, um, and everybody's voice should be heard because, you know, it's not just one person, it's all nine people, and yes, and do we agree on most things? Yes, and do we agree, we disagree on other things, of course, because everybody has different points of view. But nobody's point of view is more important or right, and one of them is wrong, it's just that everybody thinks, you know, to me, everybody has their own opinion, everybody thinks differently on how to get there. But I think at the, at the end of the day, everybody's, everybody wants the same thing. Everybody's trying to do what's, what's in the best interest, and it's just that maybe everybody has different opinions on how to get there. I will echo Shannon because quite honestly, I know I've been struggling for weeks now on this budget, and because we are in, it's a terrible position that we're in. Um, because we are trying to balance what the needs are of our district to what the town can afford, and, um, and, and it's just a terrible position that we're in, that we have to make that decision and make some sort of, you know, pass that along. Um, do I, you know, do I want to have to make any sort of cut? Absolutely not. I wish in a perfect, you know, ideal world, you know, we could put forth the five seven as our needs and be confident enough to say, hey, listen, the town is going to support this. And, you know, we, you know, we're confident that this is going to pass. I think history tells us that that's not necessarily the case, and, you know, as I wish we could fund everything that we need. I mean, I, I, I also have to look at it realistically to, as to what I think, you know, i- i- is reasonable. I mean, I do, I will say that, you know, Joe and I met on Wednesday, there is, um, a lot of stuff going on and a lot of, um, reviews of, you know, different ideas, I mean, but the problem is that we have to pass a budget. And as we may know, in a week or two or three weeks, what those ideas, if they're feasible, if they can work, and, you know, how much they are, you know, you can attach a number to them on how much they possibly might save. It's really difficult right now in the infancy stage of them trying to explore those options to quantify a number to it, because it is so, it is so new. But unfortunately, we're in a situation where we have to push, put, pass some sort of budget tonight, so I mean.
We're just out of time.
We're out of time, a- and that's the unfortunate thing, we're out of time. If we had another three weeks, we may be able to make a very, you know, educated, um, decision where we go, hey, we can get this efficiency, that efficiency, and that's going to total X, and we would be confident in X, and, you know, um, you know, I'll be honest, like, that's my biggest issue, is what that X is.
I think there's, there's a lot, we've uncovered a lot, I think there's a lot of stuff to fix, right? And how we do this, and what we're doing, I just don't think we can fix it all in one year.
And it may take multiple years and multiple steps every year, trying to build it, build it, build it, and unfortunately, I think that, you may be right, that may be our only option to, to fix it. Take it in small steps, you know, that the town may be willing to, you know, increments in trying to fix that, so I, I don't know. That's just where I am. Can I? At this point, it's just a bad situation, one way or the other.
Quick recommendation, I don't know, uh, if the motion's been made, but just perhaps a friendly amendment that, um, we also authorize the superintendent to make conforming changes to the budget before submitting to the first selectmen, and I know there's going to be changes to the capital plan. So I just want the, the record to show that the board's authorizing the superintendent to make conforming changes before submission.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that. Agreed. Mm-hmm, agreed. All right, so I'm sorry, Dave, you were going to say something to me?
No, just to give you the, um.
Okay.
Joe and Ron worked on the number, um, so my motion is to adopt a sixty million, zero four zero, six four two budget, sorry, sixty, zero four zero, eight four two, for the twenty twenty-one budget, which is a four point eight eight percent increase. With the understanding that we're going to work towards efficiencies, that we're going to have the superintendent work on those, um, those numbers and those true-ups. We all agree it's not a good situation, but we have to move forward, and we have a deadline for tonight.
All right, so I have a motion by, um, David Ferris that, um, we approve a budget of sixty million, zero four zero, eight four two. Correct?
Yes.
So sixty million, forty thousand, eight forty-two for the twenty twenty, twenty-one budget, which represents a four point eight eight percent increase. Correct?
Yes.
And George, you had seconded.
Seconded.
Okay. I just want to make sure those numbers are accurate. Those are confirmed, Ronan?
Yes.
Okay, Joe?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on that? All right, all in favor of passing that budget? All right, all against? That is a six-three. All right, motion passes. Anything else before we move to adjournment? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, second by Jerry. All in favor? Great, thank you so much, everybody.